Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Board of Commissioners, City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, regular meeting, City Hall, January 17, 2023, at 4:30. We're going to begin with our invocation and our pledge. Hold on. All right. If you would. Dear Lord, today is the day the Lord has made. Let us rejoice and be glad. Please continue to favor our city as we pray for the good health and protection of our local law enforcement personnel and firefighters that risk their daily lives to protect ours. We are grateful and thankful to you, Lord, and pray for the good health of all of our city employees that serve and work hard to provide good government and customer service to our entire community. Please watch over and protect every employee and their families. We pray for the continued peace and equity for all of our citizens of Bowling Green, Kentucky, and we pray for the leaders in our community to put their differences aside and put you first as we ask for your guidance, as we make decisions for our community. In your name we pray, amen. Thank you. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I promise you, it gets more exciting and it's going to be a lot more fun. I promise it will get better. All right. Well, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Mrs. Jackson, will you please provide a roll call, please?
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Mayor Alcott.
Here. All right, Mr. Mizel, do you have any comments at this time?
Just the usual, Mayor. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to make public comments at the end of the regular session, please sign the register at the back of the room. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. All right, so we have, first is our approval minutes, regular meeting, January 3, 2023.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Any comments? None at this time. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-9.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Todd Edge to the position of Police Sergeant in the Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. All right, this is where I promise you, son, it's going to get better because this is for the Edge family, all right? All right, so let's read this one.
So we had a retirement Sergeant Michael Kiefer, I think that's right, recently, and I'd like to ask Chief Delaney to come up and make his recommendation for Sergeant. Chief.
Mr. Mizel, thank you. Mayor, City Commissioners, I'm used to it, that's my son every night, so, and he's 11, so. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Sergeant Kiefer for his 20 years of service to our city and our agency. This promotion is possible because of the retirement of him. So tonight, I'd like to recommend and introduce to some Todd Edge, him and his family. He's got four young men here tonight with him and his wife. Todd came to us in 2011. He's a graduate of Orangeboro Catholic High School, and he went to Western Kentucky University and graduated in 2009 with a bachelor's degree in marketing. Todd is one of our police training officers. He embodies the mindset that we have, that we hire for character and train for skill. Todd is a great PTO, and sometimes we have officers with great character, but the skillset is lacking a little bit, and we use Todd a lot to help them with that skillset to get them to where they need to be because of his calm demeanor, as you'll see, and his ability to work with people makes him a great PTO. He's also one of our motor unit officers, and he's also a defensive tactics officer. So I'd like to recommend Officer Todd Edge for promotion tonight to the position of Sergeant. I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Chief. I say, so, stand up if you, if your last name is Edge. That is a basketball team and then some, so, very nice. Sergeant Edge, you have a beautiful family. Will you introduce us?
My oldest son is Gavin, next one is Ethan, farthest one is Preston, and then the one y'all had heard of is Alcott.
Well, it's nice to meet you all, and who's the...
This is my wife.
Yeah. Well, congratulations to you and your family tonight, Commissioners. I know you're excited to see this promotion as I am, so congratulations to you. Todd.
Let's make it official.
All right. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Alcott.
Yes, congratulations. Good night, Sergeant Edge. All right, next on the item is Municipal Order Number 2023-10.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Andrew Souza to the position of Public Works Director in the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
Sure, I know Greg Meredith, our former Public Works Director, retired back at the end of September. I'd like to thank Greg for all of his years of service here with the city. We went out for a search for Public Works Director and received 35 applications. We narrowed that down to 12 that we were going to interview. Six of those were in-house candidates and six were external candidates. And I had Ms. Katie Schaller-Ward, Ms. Erin Holsey, and Mr. Brent Childers assisting me with the process of the selection of the next Public Works Director. We had, we and I went through and we conducted two rounds of interviews. We took the 12, narrowed that down to four. The final four consisted of three internals and one external, and we decided upon Mr. Andrew Souza. He's a Colonel in the U.S. Air Force and Space Force, and I think Andy is watching us online right now, so hello to Andy. Andy has three master's degrees, as you can see, in his paperwork, 25-year career in the Air Force, now Space Force, a lot of, lot of experience in leadership, leading teams, developing teams, completing projects and accomplishing missions, and we're here, I'm here tonight to recommend the appointment of Mr. or Colonel Andrew Souza, retiring Colonel from the U.S. Air Force, Space Force. Be glad to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mizel. We know this is a key and critical position, and there were several interviews for this job?
Yes, we, as I mentioned, we started out with the 12. We did a first round, 12 interviews, two days' worth, I think it was, narrowed that down and did a second interview with four of them, and that was another hour and a half, two hours. Had them present a presentation of what the future of public work should look like in the next five to 10 years in their mind, and from there, we made our decision on Colonel Andrew Souza.
Commissioners.
Mr. Mizel, just one question. I was looking at, he's got a very, very impressive resume, Mr. Souza does, but I also looked at like some of the other applicants that were there. When I looked at his resume and looked at those other applicants, it looks like he didn't have like an engineering background. And I know that, to me, it seems like that those other applicants, they had like a history, and they would have been like more, their experience plus their engineering background, it would have been more, it would have gave them a higher level. What made him stand out?
His experience with leading people, developing people. He has led, been responsible for 1,500 people in his squadron. He has 80 direct reports currently that he works with. People have asked me, does he know how to pave roads? We don't need someone necessarily that knows how to pave roads. We've got excellent engineers already in the department. Public Works Department was not broken at all. There was nothing wrong with Public Works Department. We have so many skilled people, engineers, environmental people, expertise is out through the roof with Public Works, and so we were looking for a leader to, that can lead that department of 55, 60 people, and it was evident that Andrew Souza was just a good fit for that, for that role, for that leadership role.
Thank you.
And nothing, the internal candidates were excellent. It was very competitive, all the way down to the end. If not for Andrew Souza coming along, most likely would have been, would have been an internal candidate, one of the other three.
You, Mr. Mizel.
And, you know, Carlos, I share, I think your understanding is that, like me, we have a very good working dynamic within our city commission, and Jeff Mizel, I have a great amount of faith in you, the leadership, and Aaron, and the teams that you put together. And I understand that internal is always a goal, but also finding the right person, the right fit, at the right time. And I will say that I'm from the Air Force, I know Colonel Souza is from the Air Force, I did not know him in my career, but his resume does stand out, and I can tell you from the work where he's been and what he has accomplished, this is a man that is going to hit the ground running, and you're getting a force multiplier on what they can accomplish, and, you know, there's a leadership perspective here that I think that will fit well with people, and I believe he'll be the type of person that develops people and looks for those internal candidates to become more, the best of themselves. And so I have a high amount of faith in Aaron and Jeff and the team that chose and purged the candidates for us.
And Mayor, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is this, that when I was asking, there was internal candidates, like you said.
Right.
He's going to develop those teams. It sounded like even what Mr. Mizel has already said, that team's already developed. There's at least one individual that I know that probably was taken under the wing of the previous director for Public Works, and the experience and also having the engineering degree, and you're right, his resume is very, very impressive, but I can't discount that because they're going to, if they were chosen, one of those two were chosen, I do believe that they could have been hitting the ground running as well and developed the same team.
Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. All right, well, congratulations, Colonel Souza, we know you're watching, and congratulations to you and your family. We can't wait for your arrival, so I will do a round of applause for that. Municipal Order Number 2023-11.
Municipal Order authorizing the purchase of Titleist Golf Products for Crosswinds and Paul Walker Golf Courses and Hopson Golf Course and Driving Range through non-competitive negotiations with Titleist of Chicago, Illinois, in an amount up to $75,000.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
Yeah, Golf Division sells a lot of golf balls, and Titleist is the number-one golf ball out there that sells the best. We are in need of restocking our supplies. I've been told before that Titleist not only sells golf balls, but we do order other things that Titleist supplies. So Brent Childer, sorry, Brent Belcher is here, can answer any questions, but this is just authorization to restock our merchandise supplies up to $75,000. It's been over a year since we've had to buy more merchandise, but this would authorize Brent to move forward with that. Brent's here for any questions you might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mizel. Commissioners, questions? All right, roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-12.
Municipal Order approving construction and accepting maintenance of Charlie Court in the Gary Properties subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
Charlie Court is a cul-de-sac across from Meyer in that area out there. They have been inspected by Planning and Zoning. Melissa's office has also been out to inspect for acceptance for city infrastructure. We're looking at only 244 linear feet of roadway in that, within the right-of-way, and then the sidewalk and stormwater included within that as well. There is a drainage basin that will not be maintained by the city, but it will be privately maintained in that cul-de-sac, and Melissa's here tonight, can answer any questions you have about the acceptance of Charlie Court on Gary Farms Boulevard.
Mr. Mizel, questions at this time? All right, roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-13.
Municipal Order approving construction and accepting maintenance of Logistics Court in Franklin Berry Subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
This is another commercial street requesting acceptance. Planning and zoning went out in November to review it and approved it. Melissa's team went out again on this one as well. It's 760 linear feet of right-of-way with sewer included. There's also a drainage basin on this property as well that will not be the responsibility of the city, but be privately maintained by the developer, the commercial businesses there. Melissa is here again to answer any questions you might have. This is just past the South Central Kentucky Industrial Park on the right, the old Berry, Berry Farm that was redeveloped.
Mr. Mizel, Commissioners, roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-14.
Municipal Order approving construction and accepting maintenance of Traditions subdivision, Sections 2 and 3.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. Mr. Mizel.
This is the final acceptance municipal order. This is for Sections 2 and 3 of Traditions in the back. It's 2090 linear feet, about .5, .4 miles of roadway with sidewalk and storm sewer included. Planning and zoning team went out, inspected it back in May of '22. Melissa's team followed up with that with their own inspection in Public Works, and we find it acceptable to pull into city infrastructure. There is a, there are a few gaps left in the sidewalk, but there is a one-year or cash sidewalk bond in place with planning and zoning that will cover future construction of the sidewalk out there on the vacant lots, and once they get built out, the bond is to ensure that, you know, that right-of-way, that the sidewalk within the right-of-way is completed according to city specs. So again, Melissa's here to answer any questions you might have on this one. This is a residential neighborhood in the back of Traditions.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Thank you for being here, Melissa. Questions for Commissioners?
I just have one comment.
Please.
I just wanted to thank Melissa Cansler and her team of engineers. When I became a Commissioner, I learned that so much of what the city government does is these hidden things that you don't realize are an issue until it happens to you, and I know that this work that you all do before approving these subdivisions for our maintenance, are these things that make a big difference for our citizens, where you know that it's been constructed in a way that won't lead to future problems, and that when someone moves to our city, that they know that everything is the way it seems to be, and that the first storm is not going to bring in problems that they didn't know existed with water retention and things that we don't even think about until you start doing this work. And so I'm just so grateful that you all, the work that you all do to make sure that our citizens are buying places and businesses can purchase lots that they know are going to serve their needs and help them have a good quality of life. So thank you all for what you do.
Well said, Dana.
Mayor, can I add one more thing?
Please.
Melissa's team does an excellent job of making sure we don't accept things that are broken, and, because when we do, we're accepting responsibility for something that the developer should have taken care of and should have built correctly. So we do have a few developments out there that have still not been accepted because there are issues that Melissa and her team are working with them on to try to get fixed, and I hope the public realizes that we do that for a reason, to protect public tax dollars. We do not want to take on someone else's problem. As I put it, I don't want to buy a new car with a dent in the side of it. And so Melissa takes that very seriously, and we have to stand our ground, and I hope people understand that, I hope developers understand that, but that's part of what our responsibilities are, and I'd like to thank Melissa for doing that and always doing the right thing with her team and standing up for the city and making sure things are right. So, thank you, Melissa.
Melissa, thank you for behalf of all of us. We know Mr. Meredith's been gone a while, and there may be, you know, continuous gap before Souza gets here, but we thank you for your leadership and continued excellence on behalf of our city, so thank you. Okay, no further questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-15.
Municipal Order authorizing an amendment to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Capital Improvement Program for fiscal years 2022, 2023 through 2025, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
So much like budget amendments, we, from time to time, need to amend the capital improvement program. Before we deny it is an amendment for the FY '22 through FY '26 CIP. It's a multi-year layout. Katie and Megan put together a really good summary memo for you in your packets that highlights all of the changes to the CIP, and Katie's here can answer your questions on this. This is a two reading, I believe, and this would be the, I'm sorry, this is a one, sorry, this is a municipal order, but this would just amend the FY '23 through FY '26 multi-year CIP program.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mizel. Commissioners?
I had one question, just about the postponement of the Community Center program.
Paving the Community Center?
It doesn't say what, it just says postponement of.
I believe it's the paving. We parked some recreation, proposed some postponement so that we could get some money into the Crosswinds Irrigation Project, since that had more priority at this point, and so we'll look to rebudget some of those back in the future. They're probably now pushed out to FY '24.
I believe this is, I believe this is the parking lot between, behind Comer Little, between Comer Little and Moxley?
Surrounds Moxley, sorry.
So it's still usable at this point, but obviously maintenance needs to be done, so we've just deferred that an additional year, and we're still doing, within that project was Alton Lampkin Park, and we are still doing that project, so that is moving forward, and it's taken us two years to get the funding available for it. So this is not uncommon. Priorities shift and change, and our budgets, unfortunately, this year because of inflation, just have not been able to keep up, so we're just trying to redirect and reprioritize.
Katie, Commissioners, no further questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-16.
Municipal Order approving the purchase of property at 319 East 10th Avenue owned by Hoi P. and Beverly B. Hodges and authorizing the mayor and other authorized city officials to execute the real estate sale and purchase agreement, deed, and all other necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
This item pertains to a discussion we had probably a month or two ago. We came to you with the opportunity of buying the White Building here behind City Hall. You all came to a consensus that we should pursue that, and so since then, Hillary has been working with Mr. Hodges, working out a deal to purchase the property, and we have come to an agreement for $1.2 million, and I'll let Hillary kind of give you just the highlights of the agreement. Hillary?
Yes. Mr. Hodges requested that he be allowed to continue to stay in the building for four years. He thinks at that point he'll be ready to retire, but didn't want to move as law practice. And Katie and Jeff and I talked about it, and we think any actual movement will be several years away because we haven't budgeted to expand at this point. So all of the other leases are month-to-month at this point. We will get the rents from those. I don't think we have any plans to terminate those leases at this time, there's an attorney in there, also the master commissioner, and two residential. He's going to do minor repairs to his office, we'll take over the rest of the building, and I think that that is most of the deal, but I think that they were very interested in it because, as we talked about, where it's located, so.
With this purchase, we also get the garages behind the White Building that are a part, are connected to the annex.
We're paying rent for those currently, so that will stop.
We've been paying approximately $7,000 to $8,000 a year for rent on those storage spaces, so that will go away. We'll give Mr. Hodges his one bay as part of his agreement to continue, and we'll go from there.
Well, is there any offset, I guess, because he's going to be continuing in the office, or is he going to lease it, or is it at no cost?
We will do a lease, but it will be at no cost. The appraised value came back higher.
Okay.
And so we decided to just do a, to take off a portion of the appraised value in exchange for lease, so he will not make any payments to us, and he lowered the price.
Is the four-year set in stone?
The four years is set in stone, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, that's not to say if we wanted to move sooner, we couldn't call him, but he has the option, yes, to stay four years, and I think probably Katie thinks that's hopeful.
It is hopeful.
Four years is hopeful to be ready to do anything, so.
We want to, obviously, try and save for this project, and we still don't have really any idea of what could move into that location and what type of facility we might be looking at, so over the next few years, we're going to figure those details out, and in the meantime, try and save for that future CIP project.
Thank you, Hillary. Thank you, Katie. Commissioners, any further questions? None, roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-17.
Municipal Order approving the appointment of Jack Lasur to the Hopson House Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. This is an opportunity for us to appoint a new person to the Hopson House Committee. If you see his resume, Mr. Lasur has a degree from Western Kentucky University in Folk Studies. He also has an emphasis in Museumology, and he has interior and design, has a wealth of information, but more importantly, this came as a recommendation from the Hopson Board, so I think he'd make a good fit, and I recommend him for this board appointment. Okay? No further questions, roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2023-1, second readings binding.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving Amendment Number 2 to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. This was read at the last meeting. This was a 5-0 from Commissioners, or Commissioners have any questions or comments at this time? Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Mrs. Jackson's gonna check for public comments. I'll just make one quick announcement. At 5:00 PM, a few minutes ago, there is an open house over at our police headquarters, and we are recruiting for police officers and dispatchers, and that'll be open till 7:00 PM. There are 19 positions open in our police department, is that correct? That's what I read on the last report, including dispatch and cadets and all the open positions. So, we hire for character and we will train for excellence. Just a little plug right there. Ms. Jackson, okay. Well, we have no comments at this time. Our next meeting will be on January 19th, 2023, same time.
That's our strategic goal planning?
I'm sorry, let me restate. Our next public meeting that's open to the public will not be recorded. It will be at the Sloan Center, January 19th, 2023. We'll be convening eight till, I believe, approximately four. Our next regular meeting will be in this commission on February 7th, 2023, and that'll be the next commission meeting for February. This concludes our meeting. Have a great night. Thank you.